Good morning, everybody. Before we start our meeting, if we, everybody could just either silent their phone or turn it off so that we don't have any interruptions. We appreciate it, and we'll start here in about 15 seconds. Okay, I'm going to call this meeting to order, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, and I guess Commander Castillo? Lieutenant Castillo?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Madam Manager, adoption of the agenda.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We need to table action item number nine, so G9. We're just waiting for some final documentation.
Okay, Chairman, I will go ahead and move that we adopt the agenda as recommended, with item nine being tabled until other documents are turned in, and allow Chair to deviate as necessary.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And we're going to go to item C, Call to the Public. Is there anybody in Zoomland that would like to address the board? I have to turn around so I can read the board. If you hit star nine if you're on the phone, or if you could raise your hand if you're in Zoomland. Okay, seeing nobody in line. Jeff, you have a speaker slip.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I just wanted to give you an update on our COVID response still. We are still seeing a little slight increase in cases. Today, our case count was up to 22, so we're still seeing that slight increase. We are still offering free testing. We have increased that testing Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday now, to offer three days. Our vaccinations are continuing at the Rio Rico site. They are going Monday through Friday now from 9:00 to 5:00. So anybody that needs a booster or vaccination, they are available.
All age groups at the test?
All age groups at this, at our Rio Rico site, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
You are.
And is there anybody else who'd like to address the board? Okay, moving on to current events. Supervisor Mala.
Mr. Chair, good morning. I have some items to report here. Number one, I want to thank Senator Calley's, Senator Calley and his office for their, for placing our Ephraim Canyon in, in the budget. I believe it's like $2 million, exactly $2 million for the Ephraim Canyon project. I attended the NACO conference. It's a good conference, as always. We, one of the highlights, a couple of highlights. One is Veterans Day, NACO's asking a nationwide promotion of green lights for counties, cities, and individuals to place green lights on Veterans Day. I also attended back-to-school event at, for faculty staff at Santa Cruz Valley District 35, and that's always a fun event to attend. Supervisor, Chairman was there as well. And that same day, we, we attended the Nogales Family Safety Center ribbon cutting. I want to congratulate the Sheriff's Office for being part of this team. It's a great facility, and, and it's going to prevent people from having to travel to Tucson, people suffering domestic violence. And so it's, it's, it's great to see a good team. I believe George, the county attorney's office, and great, great teamwork. Good to see our county working as a team. I believe that's it.
Okay.
Oh, one last thing. I want to thank our election director, Alma Suzie, their staff, everyone involved. Chris, Chris is probably writing on very little sleep. Thank you for your hard work last night and yesterday, and all through the process of the elections. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Reese.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, everyone. I want to echo congratulations to the election staff for their hard work. There's still a few ballots that, that need to be looked at, or some of the ones that came in later in, in, in the mail, so they'll be, the Recorder's Office will be verifying those before the Election Board comes back on Thursday to continue. I'm glad we had a smooth election process down here, and that's because of the hard work of our staff and the people that, that run our elections. Alma as our Elections Director, Suzie as the Recorder, and then the Election Board and the volunteers, the people that work at the polls. So I want to personally thank them for still believing in our democracy and going out to work at the polls. Also had the opportunity for the ribbon cutting. I think as we grow as a community, it's important that we have those services available for our victims down here. It's not a good thing when they have to ride in, either in a police car or some other vehicle to go to Tucson to be examined or questioned as to what happened, whether it was domestic violence or sexual abuse. You know, everyone involved, the county superintendent of schools, the Sheriff's Department, the county attorney, the group that, that came down here to, the nonprofit group that's working with all the partners to the University of Arizona, even though I'm a Sun Devil, I got to give them kudos for some of the things that they donated down here. So, so thank you for that. And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The last two weeks have been pretty busy. I also attended the back-to-school blitz when we had, it was something that Jennifer St. John organized with getting notebooks to the kids, and I know Supervisor Mala would have been there, but he was in NACO, so we took care of that. I also attended the back-to-school blitz for the staff, which is a big event that District 35 has. It was a nice event, and also left that event and went to the ribbon cutting for the Nogales Family Center. And it is really just a great collaboration. It's something that you see in small communities where we had a nonprofit, but you had, you know, the Attorney's Office pushing for it, you have the Sheriff's Office opening, open to providing space for it, and it's, it's a huge step forward for our community. So I just want to thank all the partners, University of Arizona, Holy Cross Hospital, everybody who came together, all the volunteers. There's a committee that runs this, Mariposa Community Health Center. There's just the, the whole medical community, there's a whole group of volunteers. It's, it's, it's one of the beauties of living in a small community, when you see things like that come together. Tomorrow night, we're going to have a meeting out in Sonoyta to talk about what were the plans to expand the library and a community center in the Sonoyta building, so I'm looking forward to that. And then also on Saturday, I had the opportunity to go out to the Sonoyta Rodeo and Fairgrounds for a luncheon. It was the FFA, that's Future Farmers of America, and the 4-H Club. And it was just really great to see all the kids talking about all the different animals they raised, everything from iguanas to pigs to heifers, and talk about their challenges and what they learned, and it's really quite an event. And there's really two big active groups in this FFA, 4-H, and there's a group out of Rio Rico that does it, and there's also the group that's out of Sonoyta. So kudos to all those parents and all those volunteers that, that make that happen. That's what I have to report. Finally, in the elections, I do want to thank everybody. I mean, this is a team effort to pull a, an election off, and, you know, so you have the staff that works usually with us in the Supervisor's Office and Human Resources, and all those, those people are all working. The county attorney's office has been engaged since the very early to make sure that we're, you know, dotting our i's and crossing our t's correctly. And, you know, it's, our elections are sacred, they're, they're, we have to believe in them. And in Santa Cruz County, we take them very seriously, and we've done them well for many, many years. So I want to thank the staff for doing all that work, and that's what I have. Madam Manager.
Good morning again. I've also apparently had a busy two weeks, because I have like a page of notes here, so bear with me. I'd like to go back to the last board meeting where the Audit General's Office reported the audit findings to you all, and I would like to extend a thanks to Mauricio and the Finance Department for the excellent job that they do every year on our audits, as well as all the other departments that, that helped to get those audits done. The auditors did mention the IT findings, but what they forgot to mention, and I actually had my hand raised, because I was listening in, was that we've had our third consecutive year with no federal findings. And so that's a great accomplishment to the finance team and to every department that runs those federal grants. Since the pandemic, we've received 29 new grants, new federal and state grants, and in the Finance Department, we've had no additional personnel. So I did just want to thank this, take this opportunity to thank Mauricio and his team and all the departments for that great work. I also attended the, the NACO conference, a lot of information on broadband, and HR, actually, how to retain and recruit employees, so that was, that was good. Mauricio and I are continuing our meetings on the Small Business Forgivable Loans with the ARPA money with Angie Donaldson. I want to thank Jeanette, Claire, Lizbeth, Patricia, and Supervisor Bracker for going out to, we were at both the NUSD Jump Back to School and the District 35 Back-to-School Blitz, handing out notebooks to those kids. So thank you all for doing that in, in my absence. I also attended the District 35 Welcome Back Celebration, which recognizes the teacher new hires, and then the past district winners of the year for administrative, teacher, and support staff. I did also go to the ribbon cutting for the Family Safety Center right after that. I was also able to attend on Monday a breakfast sponsored by the school superintendent's office for the five interns that the, the county had here working over the summer. And last but not least, I would like to also extend my appreciation for the election process last night to the Elections Department, the Recorder's Office, and then a huge thanks to Chris, Kim, Maintenance Frank from Public Works, HR, BOs staff, like you said Supervisor Bracker, it takes an army, and I just want to thank everybody involved. Sheriff's Department, yes, I had them down, so thank you, but I forgot to read them, so, and then all the volunteers. So yes, thank you, thank you so much for everything.
Item E, Department Reports and Activities. Mauricio?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Good morning.
Morning.
Cash and Investment Report. The General Fund has an overall balance of $16,765,295, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $10 million. The Road Fund has an overall balance of $488,873, with an investment amount of $6,989. The Flood Control District has an overall balance of $1,253,304, with an investment amount of $514,000. The Jail District, overall balance $1,410,47, with an investment amount of just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $41,639,864, with an investment amount of $13,656,798, for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $12,281,765.
Okay, are there any questions?
None, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, Mauricio, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we recess a regular session, convene into the Flood Control District.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we're in Flood Control District. Item one, Director, Project Report. Angie, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, good morning, members of the board.
Good morning, Angie.
We had a significant amount of rain just a couple of days. Overall, for Santa Cruz County alone, we had 52.65 inches of water, which comes out to about 4.05 inches. We're still below the average, which is between 4.14 to 4.34 inches. So we're a little bit below, depending on which scale you look at, but overall, we did have a significant amount of waterfall. There wasn't done a lot of activity. Most of every, all our projects right now are dormant, waiting on, still on ADM to get our contracts back. I did talk to them, I think, Tuesday, Monday, and they said that their chairman should be back this month, and they will be signing them and getting them back to us. And the only other changes were for the, just the counts, the number counts, everybody else is still on the waiting list. So as far as flood hazard information sheets, we had a total of 189. 15 were for the city of Nogales, five for Patagonia, and 169 for the town, for Santa Cruz County. There was a total site reviews of one in our county. There was zero drainage reports and 10 floodplain use permits, two in the city, and eight for our county. I did talk to Isabel, she didn't have a report, but Mr. Guerra is here today, so I imagine he's, if he has a report, he'll be presenting it. Any questions?
No question. Any questions for the board?
Thank you, Angie.
Okay, Angie, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do we have a report from the city of Nogales?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Guerra, good morning, welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm here to make my monthly report here in front of you, and then again, I don't want to miss the opportunity to continue saying thanks for the Ephraim Canyon. Again, a special kudo for John Hayes, that I know that are mainly because of his efforts applying for this grant for a while, see, finally, it is here. Thank you. And then for the Nogales watch, as you know, we have few problems there along Hojocan Drive, where the erosion is significant. Unfortunately, we have to wait for the, the approval of the Army Corps of Engineers for a permit with them. Currently, we have a consultant working on the environmental assessment. That was one of the requirements from Jesus Valdez to assist with that, the permit with the Army Corps of Engineers, and, and we are working on it. Unfortunately, the way that it is, is the Army Corps of Engineers doesn't allow us to go there now, unless something major happens, we have green flag to go and fix it. But until we get that permit and we ensure that there is no impact to the environment, we'll be able to work there. So I don't know when we'll have the permit ready, but the consultant is, is currently working, so hopefully nothing will happen, everything now and then. And then as typical, our Street Department is currently working in road cleaning after the rains, that's, they are very busy, and I was told by, by the Street Department that they will not be named anymore as Street Department, they will be named Tree Department. They are currently cutting trees like crazy. I mean, one of the cases was in the cemetery, where they have to go and cut the pines there, and there are many cases like that everywhere, it's typical. And then I just to mention, I was, I want to mention this because it's important for our community. We are pending and want to support the Nogales community development. They, they have a renovation project on the Fox, Foxwood Building, where they are having struggles to get the permit because of the, the limitation of the investment. The purpose of the project, as you know, is for providing free training for the community for, for, and then the, they have a grant, I guess, already for the renovation of that building, but the thing is that it's in the floodplain, and they need to comply with that. So again, we have to work together and see what we, how can we help them to make this project a reality. So that's it. Any question?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
So, so Juan, you don't think that, I think your road is pretty close, especially at a couple of the points around the Hojocan, because I go by there every day when I go to see my parents. It's getting dangerously close with the, the scouring that's happening, that you may lose your road. I know that one of the, the guardrails is already hanging, so maybe you need to let the Corps know. I know we had a meeting that one time, and we, trying to remember who the gentleman was that presented all the options and who owned the land and everything, but anything that we can do to assist you. The other thing is that we've been working for the last couple of years to try to get that floodplain and floodway, that downtown Morley narrowed down to the middle of the street. Everything's been submitted. We're waiting to, to hear back from them to see, you know, about map revision. We have a company that's been working on it for a while. I'm sure you were also part of the group that approached back to help identify some of the issues in Nogales, Sonora, which is the reason why there's so many water issues here, because many of their retention detention basins have filled up with sediment, or they're building houses on them because they see a, a flat piece of land. So, you know, we will continue to work with the city. I think it's important that we have that relationship, especially when it comes to the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. I mean, we're all part of Santa Cruz County, whether you live in the city, the town of Patagonia, Toubac, or Rio Rico, so we're all Santa Cruz County citizens. So thank you for the, for your report. I know you and Jesus Valdez have a good rapport, so we're always there to, to assist you and look forward to continue to work to find solutions for that, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Supervisor Mala?
I just have one question pertaining to the Hojocan issue there. Doesn't the sewer line also run right by there as well?
You are correct. In, in one section, the sewer main is, is right there, and then in part, I recognize it might be part of the problem as well, yeah.
Yeah, I think we should raise a red flag with the Corps of Engineers.
Yeah, unfortunately, the, the Army Corps of Engineers came to Nogales and see, they, they, they are aware of what is going on there. To the eyes of the Army Corps of Engineers, this is, is not an emergency. According to them, this case has been there for years. Is, unless something major happens from now and, and tomorrow, they will consider it an emergency.
Wow, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Do we have a report from the town of Patagonia? Nope, okay. Is there any public comment on, for the flood control? Does anybody like to make a comment from the public? Anybody online? Can you raise your hand? Can you come up to the podium? Okay, seeing nobody moving up.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we adjourn our Flood Control District and reconvene regular session.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item one, inter-action items, discussion, possible action. For authorization to fill, A, vacant intelligence analyst position for the sheriff, vacant deputy sheriff one position, vacant public safety telecommunicator position, and deputy county attorney five position.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second, and a discussion, these are all budgeted items?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item two, discussion, possible action to approve Amendment one to intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Border Regions, University of Arizona, approved on July 5th, 2022, for the youth project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Chris, do you want to talk about that one a little bit?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. So this is part of our ESTER grant that we got, the $6 million we got from the Department of Education, and this specific amendment will allow the University of Arizona to increase kindergarten, kindergarten readiness programs throughout the county with all the elementary schools.
That's terrific. Thank you very much. Have there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item three, discussion, possible action to approve mannerandums of agreement with South 32 Limited for the 2022-2023 school year to support A, technological lift program in the amount of $30,000, and B, elementary robotics after school program in the amount of $35,000.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item four, discussion, possible action to approve the Santa Cruz County Local Emergency Planning Committee, L-E-P-C, Emergency Response and Recovery Plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item five, discussion, possible action to approve and adopt proclamation designating August 2022 as Child Support Awareness Month from Supervisor Mala.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion, possible action to approve ESNS rental agreement for election equipment from August 1st, 2022 to July 31st, 2023, in the amount of $94,455.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we can have more safe elections. Item seven, discussion, possible action to award bid number B-06-22-CO52 for 2022-2023 legal publications and advertising. You got, you got to open it, right?
Yes, that is correct.
How many did you receive?
We only received one bid from the Nogales International, and we have it right here. So we will go ahead and proceed and open it.
The drum roll, please.
And the Oscar goes to?
Good to see you, Manny.
Okay, so the proposal reflects a 25 percent, 25 cent or 4.4 rate increase to $6 per column inch, plus the standard 10% processing fee for a total of 6.60 PCI.
Column inch, right? Okay, so we only have one, so I'll go ahead and move that we approve the bid as, as read by our acting clerk this morning.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Is there any other discussion?
Under discussion, it seems kind of crazy we do this every year. Is there any way to do a sole source, Kim? I mean, you know, it's just, it, it, to me, it's, it just seems kind of.
I can't give you legal.
Anti-dramatic, because we know what's going to happen, so.
I can't give you legal advice in regular session, but I'm happy to discuss that with you in more detail in executive session if you'd like.
No, 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 I'll, I'll sit down and I'll talk with you about it later, but I'm, I'm just kind of thinking out loud. I know that there are certain cases where you can have a sole source, but anyway.
Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman. Any other discussion? I know, I appreciate it when we get to see Mr. Coppola in our chamber every once in a while, so thank you very much. Thank you very much for attending.
Well, we have to vote yet.
Let us vote first. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Mr. Coppola, you'd like to address the board?
Yeah, and I appreciate the, the motion, and I've been doing this since for a few decades, and I understand the, the legal predicament, and it's unfortunate, but it gives me a reason to be here. And, you know, the, as far as the increase, you'll understand that we've had plenty of increases with paper and labor and all of that, so it needed to reflect a little bit, so, but I try to be as fair as possible. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Item eight, discussion, possible action to approve bonds of duplicate warrant, A and B.
Move to approve. Second.
Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item nine is tabled. Item 10, discussion, possible action, recommendation for approval, disapproval of application for extension of premise for Callahan Vineyards in Elgin.
Everything in order, Madam Clerk?
Everything in order.
Okay, any?
Move to approve. Second.
And a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and motion carries. Item 11, approval of minutes from 7:22, 22.
Move to approve.
Second.
And motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item 12, demands.
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling $1,842,083.66, of which $448,750.61 are from the General Fund.
Second.
Okay, have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, we get to pay our bill. In about a minute, we're going to go into our hearing.
It's 10:30.
It's 10:30, darn.
So you can reset.
I should, I should have made everybody talk more.
It's a special meeting, so we can, it's a special meeting, right? So we can adjourn this one and then just call the other meeting to order, Kim? Because it says on here, notice of public hearing and special meeting.
You want an adjournment and a reconvening?
So we can, well. So we can, well, I'm just asking that we can adjourn our regular session and then convene into the special meeting. Yeah, okay. So I'll move that we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion to second, all those, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We are adjourned.
We'll call the meeting to order at 10:30.